About five minutes after six, I'd like to open this meeting with a roll call.
John Merk.
Here.
Will Segwitz.
Here.
Steve Sylvia.
Present.
Jen Blum.
Here.
Bob Clark.
Present.
Carolina Hernandez. Krista Ling.
Here.
Courtney Brightman.
Present.
Thank you.
In addition to the full school committee, Superintendent Alan Strauss, Renee Rodriguez, also present. Outside of Lakeham, is anyone here tonight recording the meeting? Seeing no one, I'll ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I would like to make a couple of small modifications to the agenda. As written on the agenda, we will not be participating in an executive session tonight. We will open right into our open session. I would also prefer to move new business ahead, as I see we have some guests here for these votes.
I'll make a motion to move new business to begin with the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Hearing a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Thank you. All right, I will also entertain a motion to accept minutes from our meeting on June 26th of this year.
And I have the wrong, I'll fix the date on, for some reason I have the 25th down, I apologize. I'll make sure it says 26.
Okay, thank you, Renee.
So moved.
Hearing a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained?
Abstained.
Okay.
This is the June 26th?
That's correct. Okay. Motion passes. I will entertain a motion to accept open public meeting minutes for July 31st.
So moved.
Hearing a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstained?
I abstain in part. I attempted to, I was virtual for the executive session, unable to attend, not for personal reasons, but it was just a decision of the committee to not attend the public session.
Thank you, Stan.
So would the minutes roll together?
So, it will only show that you participate, when it's the executive session, it will show that you were a participant there.
Yeah.
But it doesn't show in the minutes.
Okay. And even in that case, it was a wonky participation given?
Right, so you can technically vote for the executive session, but you didn't, you weren't in the open, so we can put you as abstained.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, abstained, I abstained.
That motion passes. I will entertain a motion to accept executive session minutes from July 31st.
So moved.
So good.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Abstained.
And one abstained.
I'm abstaining on that, too.
All right, I have five.
One and two.
I'm sorry. I have five in approval. I have
One and one.
One in disapproval and two abstained from that. All right, motion passes. As captured in the minutes, I'm sorry, as captured in the acceptance of minutes, we have minutes noted from July 1st. My motion to move that to the next meeting of the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee, as that date reflects a meeting of that Subcommittee. Okay. Moving on to new business. We have in our packets a, the SRO agreement for FY25.
If I can say a couple of things?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank Chief Rose, who's here. Chief Rose, myself, Detective Maderos, and Mike Ward, Principal Ward, Matt, to discuss the potential possibility of bringing in an SRO to Freetown Elementary School, which we had talked about at our previous meeting. The conversation was rich, it was positive. I have nothing but praise for the transparency, the collaboration, and I want to thank Chief Rose, Detective Maderos, for putting forth this agreement on having an SRO. I do want the towns to understand that this is not a 24/7 SRO, that the way this grant works, and there'll be no cost to the district at this point, it's something we're going to discuss for next year's budget, and we've had that conversation, is that Detective Maderos can't be in two places at one time. So if he is needed because of some emergency, some call, he will be leaving the school to go take care of that. It's not like Val, who is here, she's here all day, and that does not change. So I just wanted the community to know that. This is a huge step for us. Detective Maderos will have his own office and will be there as often as he can be, but I didn't want the perception, if he leaves and SRO is not on campus, as to why. I just wanted everybody to know why. But this has been fully funded through a grant?
Yeah, I could explain a little bit.
Yes.
Folks, again, my name is Scott Rosen, obviously the new chief in Freetown. I started last July of 2023. And just to give you a little bit of history, January of this year, I took the opportunity, put out a survey to the public, and tried to get feedback on the additional resources that they would want from our department, paying for the community. One of the items was an SRO position at the elementary school. And as expected, there was an overwhelming support from over 400 individuals that submitted for the survey. It was strongly supported or just supported with about 80 to 90% feedback encouraging an SRO in the elementary school. So the support was there. So as I dove in deeper to this possibility, I looked at my budget, talked to the town forefathers and even the town administrator, and I was able to craft up a plan of a temporary, part-time SRO position in the elementary school with the personnel from our department. This only works is, if everybody is healthy and things are going well within the department, I'm able to support that individual Monday through Friday within the school system. But if you can imagine, people get hurt, there's mandatory training, there's all these other outlining issues that need to be maintained and complied with, I may have to pull that individual out of that setting to be able to make sure these other issues are dealt with. But my goal and my intent is to have that individual in that position, in that school, as much as I can, without causing too much of an overtime situation within my budget. I have a budget, I have to work within that budget. I promised my town forefathers and the town administrator that that's my goal. However, again, and I just mentioned before, it's my goal to get him in as much as I can. I did apply for a new grant this year. It was due in June, it's a COPSS 2024 grant, and that grant basically provides extra position officers within your community that support community-related functions. So the grant that I crafted and submitted was to support a full-time SRO position and another function within our community dealing with the boat ramp in Town Beach that we've, over the years, we've dealt with quite a few issues. The announcement of that grant, if we get awarded that grant, it would be in October of this year. Please keep your fingers crossed. If things work out well, we will get awarded that grant. I'll be looking to support that full-time position with that grant. And at that point, I'll be working closely with the Lakeville chief and offer our services over to the regional school system as well. That's why the memorandum, excuse me, memorandum of understanding this year is directed towards the elementary school only. If everything goes well and we get that funding from the grant, we can offer extra services over here to the middle school and the high school. But one step at a time, we'll see how it goes, and we'll see where that grant gets funded to us. Does that hopefully make a lot of sense? Any questions or concerns about?
Anybody questions with the chief?
No, just thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Very, that's great. Thank you.
Okay. Hearing no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to accept the memorandum of understanding for the FY25 school year for the part-time SRO officer for FES.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, motion passes. Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a donation from LMM Asphalt.
So I received an email from Rob Morse, who is the president of LLM Asphalt, and quickly went through it, and like many other things that come across our desk, we assume at first, what are they trying to sell us? And reading further, it was the offer of a donation, and it was at a perfect time. So I spoke with Greg, Greg Goodwin, he had a conversation with Mr. Morse directly, who came out, and it is a legitimate donation worth, in this case, $6,850 from the company, to repair potholes throughout the main campus. Last year, Greg, I believe, it was $16,000 that we paid, so I'm not sure if he just doesn't charge a lot, or we're going to be using him in the future. But regardless, we did this rather quickly. I apologize for not getting this to you on Monday. We just got the letter yesterday. They have been wonderful. They are going to start Monday and get this done, so it's ready for the first day of school. So, but I can't accept that kind of donation without school committee approval. So that's what it is. I don't have a lot of information. They are not based in Lakeville or Freetown, they are based in Millboro, as you can see on, but they came to us, they had been driving through here, actually. I don't know if they were using the Grays' playground, I'm not quite sure.
That's what they were up here doing, to confuse what they were to around the campus.
And he saw some potholes and lucky us. So the vote is yours.
I make a motion to accept the donation?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor of accepting the donation for repairing of potholes around the main campus from LMM
We're jumping.
From LMM Asphalt.
Yes.
Approximate value, $6,850.
So my follow-up question becomes, we obviously will send a letter of thanks. I don't know what the school committee's past practice has been in terms of publicly thanking beyond here at the school committee meeting. I don't know, you know, he has not asked for anything, he has not said he wants his name anywhere. I just want to make sure, is a letter enough from us as a district? Is everybody good with that?
Yeah, I would suggest a joint letter from the committee and the main office.
Okay, so we'll write one up. I'll have the school committee sign it. I will sign it, and we'll be good. And Greg, you can call in tomorrow and get this scheduled. Perfect. Thank you.
My car says thank you.
Yes. Yeah, and if they are watching tonight, thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay, outstanding. Motion passes. Okay, old business. It is the purpose of this meeting to conduct the superintendent evaluation for year two of the superintendent contract. Okay. Okay, thank you, Bob. At our last open meeting, Alan presented some evidence to the meeting. In addition to that, the eight of us committee members were submitted evidence packages in which to review and use that to conduct our individual reviews, to give ratings to all of the different indicators as part of his rubric, and it will be this portion tonight that we will discuss those in the meeting. Anybody questions, comments, anything?
Not yet.
Apologize ahead of time, being my first time going through this in a meeting.
Are we going through the survey first, or?
We could do that, that would be great. So as a school committee, we came up with a survey that was sent out to the parents and families of both communities, the staff members, and town officials for both Freetown and Lakeville. And we returned, you know, greater than 500 responses of that survey, which was, I thought was excellent, excellent feedback and participation. Jen, you're welcome to start.
Respectfully, through the chair, I am going to go over item by item and give you all the exact percentages. But I do want to start by saying that, at our last meeting on July 31st, 2024, Superintendent Strauss made us all aware in open session that evidence sent to the school committee is confidential and not to be shared. Due to this, a future investigation into whether a school committee member shared any part of the evidence is on the horizon. I am saddened and disgusted that this potentially took place and has not yet been resolved, as it directly affects this evaluation, and I for one do not support moving forward with this evaluation tonight. That being said, as a member of the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee, it is my job to report against my strong feelings, so here we are. Before I start going over the survey results, I'd like to thank everyone who took the time to not only fill out the survey, but to the many who wrote the narrative. They were all read, and some great considerations will come of it. Thank you again. The survey went out to a large group, including family residents, town officials, and professional staff in our district. 512 responses came back, which is one of the highest numbers of survey responses we have ever come back with. I'd like to remind everyone that this survey is not the final evaluation. It is simply a guide and evidence supporting our final summative rating. So I'm going to start with the first question that was asked, which is, my student, students, is happy and feel safe at school. So I did a lot of work on this, and I broke it down literally by percentages, more so than we were given. 29% of our community that was polled, that took the survey, 29.7% strongly agree, 37.3 agree, which brings us to 67% agree or strongly agree. 3.3 people strongly disagreed, 4.1 people disagreed, which brings us to 7.4% that disagreed or strongly disagreed with that question.
We don't have a copy of that?
It's in your email. We all got a copy of that.
I think when the survey was posted.
Oh, okay, okay. I just didn't print it. Question number two. My student, students, is making academic progress in school. 31.9% strongly agreed, 39.9% agreed, giving us a total of strongly agreed and agreed of 71.8%. 2.3 people strongly disagreed, I mean percent, my apologies, 2.3 people, I mean percent, strongly disagreed, which brought us to 4.6 of you that disagreed or strongly disagreed. Question number three. There are resources available to support my students' academic, social, emotional, physical progress, i.e. English language learner, special education, literacy, guidance, student support, speech and language, occupational therapy, physical therapy, extracurricular, and after-school programs. 24.3 strongly agreed, 33.1% agreed, bringing us to a total of 57.4% who agreed and strongly agreed. 3.5% strongly disagreed, 6.3% disagreed, which brings us to a total of 9.8% disagree or strongly disagree. Question number four. My family is comfortable communicating with the superintendent, school administration, teachers, and school staff. 30.9% strongly agreed, 35.4 agreed, which brought us to a total of 66.3% agreed or strongly agreed. 4.7 strongly disagreed, 5.7%, I'm sorry, 4.7% strongly disagreed, 5.7 disagreed, which brought us to a total of 10.4 percentage in disagreement or strongly disagreement. Question number five. My family feels that the Free Lake school system acknowledges and celebrates our identity and culture within our school community. 20.6% strongly agreed, 33.7% agreed, which brought us to a total of 54.3% agreed or strongly agreed. 3.7% strongly disagreed and 3.7% disagreed, which brought us to a total of 7.4 disagree or strongly disagree. Question number six. There are opportunities for my family to participate in school or district programs and events. 30.8% strongly agreed, 42.7% agreed, which brought us to a total of 73.5% in agreement or strong agreement. 2% strongly disagreed, 3.7% disagreed, which brought us to a total of 5.7 in disagreement or strong disagreement. Question number seven. My family believes the superintendent's office effectively manages school grounds and operations, i.e. school budgeting and playgrounds, athletic fields, school safety protocols, transportation, and school district policies. 37.8% agree, 19.2% strongly agreed, which brought us to a total of 57% strongly agreed or agreed. 7.6% strongly disagreed and 12.5% disagreed, which brought us to a total of 20.1% disagreeing or strongly disagreeing. Question number eight. My family is engaged in the school community and school district with appropriate communication from the school and district office, i.e. newsletters, websites, email, Aspen Family Portal, etc. 29.9% strongly agree, 44.2% agree, bringing us to a total of 74.1 percentage in agreement or strongly agreed. 2.2% strongly disagreed and 3.7% disagreed, which brought us to a total of 5.9% strongly disagreeing or disagreeing. Last and final question, number nine. My family is satisfied with the superintendent's management of the district budget and allocations of resources through the district. 27.3% agreed, 10.4% agreed strongly, which brought us to a total of 37.7 in agreement or strong agreement. I want to point out on this one that there were, 25% of the people polled remain neutral on this. So 8.5, I'm sorry, 16.1% strongly disagreed and 12% disagreed, which brought our disagreements and strong disagreements to 28.1%. So, based on the evidence in the survey and the percentages, I would say that this is a very positive survey. Numbers don't lie, and we thank you very much for taking the time. As far as the narrative and the responses, it was more of a three to one ratio in favor of the superintendent's job here. So that is my conclusion.
Excuse me, may I address about the release of information? I am the one who forwarded that document, as I have admitted, and the superintendent's rubric is actually a public document, and I actually called the Superintendent's Association and they agreed with me. I also called the Attorney General's Office and filed a complaint against the superintendent for releasing confidential information of, one, a student, and two staff members. Also, Desi would like me to file a complaint, and I said no, because I do not want to release the student's information. So that was incorrect. All superintendent, all parts of the superintendent evaluation is a public document. He released that information, which is confidential information, he released that information, and I was told by the Superintendent's Association that that is a fireable offense. I leave it up to the Attorney General's Office and the Superintendent's Association to do whatever it is they need to do with that. But that confidential information should not have been released.
So through the chair, I don't think in open session here is where the committee should address this.
You, I believe Jen opened that door, and so did the superintendent last, the last time we met, on 7/31. So the door has been opened.
Okay, so that being said, through the chair, can I ask a question?
You may, go ahead.
Great. Kristo, so you admitted to, what exactly did you just admit to?
I admitted to forwarding the evidence documents to someone who worked, someone who worked for the town, and that evidence, as stated, is a public record. And, you know, upon speaking to the Attorney General's Office, the Attorney General's Office said it is not public. Well, the confidential information of the student and two staff members is the confidential information, and it should not be entered in the public rubric, because we did not have authorization to look at that information.
Okay, thank you. I would disagree with that, and we can have legal sort that out. And I appreciate you saying that you did forward it.
You admitted it.
Absolutely, why would I lie about it?
Who, so can you please state who you forwarded it to?
Margaret French.
Okay, thank you. So let me, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. So.
I believe you already did, when you and Alan decided that you were going to censor me in public for that.
Well, ma'am, that very much still could be coming, so I'm not ready to go there. So please don't put words in my mouth. I guess my confusion is, that's a very bold statement to sit here and say that that's a fireable offense in an open meeting about our superintendent, as one of eight, okay? You're one of eight. You're one of eight, so...
Absolutely.
So my, I, I guess I'm just a little bit confused. If you're standing up publicly and asking him to resign...
I am not. I said...
You said it's a fireable offense.
I said that is what the Superintendent's Association said.
And I don't want to get into a back and forth and, and, and I just don't want you to assume, the next thing that comes out of my mouth, I don't want this to happen either, okay? If it's a fireable offense for the superintendent, you should be standing up right now and resigning, if that's where we're at.
No, because it was a public document.
So, and again, we're, we're gonna get legal's opinion on this, I don't want to go back and forth.
Absolutely.
I do agree with you that the superintendent's evaluation, the summative evaluation, is a public document.
It is.
However, the evidence that the superintendent entrusted the school committee with...
Is not.
Is not, I, I, it's my opinion and the opinion of legal that it is not.
Well, it is the opinion of Desi, the Superintendent's Association and the Attorney General's Office.
Yep.
So please, check it out.
I have a question.
Well, we're going to.
Through the chair. Okay, one second. Steve, you had your hand up first. Uh, I'll defer.
Oh, thank you so much. So, basically what you're trying to say is, he sent the information to everyone and then in that information, it was something attached that it should have been because it was, um, it was a, um...
No.
No?
The evidence that was attached is a public document. What was contained in the public document is not, is confidential information.
Okay.
So he released...
So that should have happened?
Right, we shouldn't have even seen it. It wasn't even for the school committee. The school committee is not allowed to see student, confidential student information.
So the rational thing to do would be forward that to towns members, but okay.
Did she open it? Or did I know what was in there? No.
So here's, so here's where we're at.
A couple of things, I have to say something.
I didn't know what was in there because I didn't read it.
Correct.
So you forwarded it without reading it? So you, so you did not read the information?
Number two, superintendent does not have anything to do with the central. So I appreciate if you take my name off the fact that I have nothing to do with central in the school committee.
I know you don't, but when I got a phone call from John, he said that it was you and Will, so...
Mr. Chairman, is that correct?
That bus just arrived.
I'm not sure the exact dialogue of that conversation.
Okay.
Steve?
So, through the chair, with all due respect, I, I think we need to engage a third party. Jen, you mentioned an investigation. Have we formalized that? Is there an investigation?
From what I understand, the superintendent requested this three weeks ago and investigation hasn't even begun yet. So, shame on our chair and everyone at this table for not having an investigation started at this point because we probably wouldn't be here discussing it like this at this point.
So I don't know what it looks like, but I'd like to make a motion to have a third party investigate this entirely.
Yeah, so move.
Second.
I'll second, I'll make that motion.
And, and further, I do now have reservations that the, the evaluation could be compromised.
One hundred percent.
I agree, yes, absolutely.
So I would need an opinion from legal and John, not three weeks, probably tonight or tomorrow, how we go about this.
Can you explain how it's compromised?
To start, we have a school committee that just admitted they're not looking at the evidence. I mean, we can start there. We can, we can start with the fact that whether it was opened or not, there was a serious breach of trust by, by the school committee.
No, I needed, I needed you to just say the first part, that it had not been opened and yet my evaluation, which is, well, determined by evidence, was not opened by a school committee member, so how is that a legitimate evaluation?
And I would further add, anytime there's an investigation or a pending investigation or about to be, I'm not sure why we would proceed with an evaluation that could be compromised because of the outcome.
And that's why I publicly stated I do not support moving forward.
But isn't it that document wasn't even open?
It doesn't matter.
I don't know, this is...
That she...
Much of this is new to me.
The document wasn't even open?
Perhaps that's why we need the investigation to figure out what's what.
The document wasn't opened because Mr. Strauss did not give permission. You see, when we received the document, we have to request permission. Right, so the only reason Margaret French did not open it is because he did not grant her permission. Had he...
So that is key, that is important.
Right, that is not important. I don't understand what, no, okay, okay.
I mean, we can agree to disagree, I think. Through the chair, I think...
So there's a motion on the table to formally investigate.
Correct.
And a second.
Okay. Hearing a motion and a second to request a third party formally investigate whether evidence provided, one, is public information and, two, if it should have been ethically given to the school committee originally, is that, is that the correct?
No, no, ethically given to...
No, no, don't misunderstand, help me with the language.
Okay, ethically given to administration outside of the school committee.
But I, I believe one of the conversations was, should we have got the material...
In the first place.
In the first place.
There are two issues here, there are two issues here that we need to look into, right?
Yep.
Which is the, the receiving of evidence from the school committee, who's an entrusted member of the district from the superintendent, and then a school committee member forwarding that information out to people outside of the school committee.
But what John said is, should the school committee have had that evidence in the first place?
We're gonna find that out.
Of confidential information.
Yep, we're gonna find that out.
Do we need an investigation for that or do we just need a legal opinion?
Need a...
I don't think we need an investigation, I think we need to address it with legal.
I would love to.
I would love to.
Yeah, so I don't know why we're gonna waste, and away resources and funds on doing a private investigation, with all due respect, Steve, but I think what we need to talk is with legal and see what was done incorrectly and then, that's what needs to be done.
My recommendation would be to have legal come to our next meeting and, and share out whatever findings there are to be found.
And, and added to that question would be, is there a need to be an investigation? Because from what I'm hearing, there's a question on the presentation of evidence on one side and on the other side, there would be an acceptable use or inappropriate use of email.
Yep.
Absolutely. Go right ahead.
So, if, if there's an outcome to that or legal decides, then there would have to be an investigation and I would still argue that all of this would be compromised.
I would like to know why it was sent out to a public official.
It was asked for it, it was a public document.
So Margaret French asked you for that, is that what you're saying? You just said it was asked for, so she asked you?
It's just, yeah, what was, what was in the superintendent's evaluation? I mean, I don't, if it's a...
No, I was gonna say, I have a question because don't we have a, if the town of Free Town, we have a master records access officer, they keep track of all the public records that we know who's asking for what and, you know, who it's coming from, what they want. So this came, do we have a policy, I think it should be...
She did not send a public record request. It's not a FOIA that you sent, you sent a public record request underneath the Freedom of Information Act, asking for something specific. That did not come to our office. So that's a one-to-one conversation that a school committee member is having that is absolutely an ethical violation.
To be determined.
If I could, there's a timeline issue now that I, I think this out. When this hap, I mean, we haven't even done the evaluation yet and that evidence is being shared prior to the evaluation process, which is concerning to me. Which is also probably before we formally met, whether it was an executive session or informal session.
I think, as far as investigation is concerned, I think we just need to investigate the whole process of doing an evaluation and to find out what needs to be done for an evaluation. Because when I talked to the Superintendent's Association, they told me that everything has to be done a certain way and everything you put in the rubric has to be public. That's what I was told. Everything is public.
Can you explain what it means when you say put everything into the rubric? Are you talking about the evidence?
The evidence and whatever else comes with it and it could be posted, like most districts post all of the superintendent's evaluation.
Through the chair.
We haven't even gotten through the evaluation.
Hold on, point of water here, point of water, please. The vice chair will step in. So, through the chair. Crystal, again, I agree with you, but I think there is some, there are some, you're taking some liberties there. One hundred percent, the summative evaluation, the final product is something that is presented in open session and posted, one hundred percent. We're, again, we're dealing with two things, two things here. Claiming that the superintendent should not have even gave the subcommittee or the school committee that evidence.
Exactly, that's what I was told.
Another claim, which you admitted to and I appreciate you for doing that, was that you did, prior to the evaluation being completed, send it out to members outside of the committee. So those are the two things that we need to have legal look into and come with their recommendation.
Because I was told that it was public.
ASAP, by the way, ASAP.
That's fine.
So with that being said, I'm gonna make a motion to table the evaluation at this point.
Second.
And I'm sorry, Alan, I'm sorry.
Hold on, hold on, chair, there's a motion and a second, okay?
Is there a discussion on this? Alan, you're welcome. You're welcome to speak.
There was this outcry for a survey by a very small number of people. And I do want to add a piece, and Jen, you started to talk about it at the end, those numbers...
I have that, but it got derailed.
Those numbers do not include NA, which is not applicable, and neutral.
Correct.
Correct.
Steve, you want to say something?
So, no, interesting, I was gonna comment on that. The nine survey questions, so the survey was not perfect, I'll be the first to admit that, but the catch group was also very big. We were looking at residents, family members in the school committee, town officials, and we used listserv, we used the school's database, so if you were a town official, if you were a parent or, you know, you, you could have gotten this multiple times. So there was a number of responses, but because of that, we should have added, we had NA and neutral. So the NA sort of, you know, impacted the data a little bit because if you were a resident and you just picked an NA, some of those school-related numbers could jump from sixty-seven percent to almost eighty, if not higher. So it was a fundamental flaw in the survey, but it was good information because it's only evidence, but I do think it, it's, it was good and it was very positive for the district in a lot of areas and it was all connected to the different indicators and standards in the rubric, but I think it could have been better had we produced a better survey and that's on us. But because of the, the, I don't want to say outcry, but because of the request for the survey, the catch area was supposed to be, we were trying to catch everybody and that was kind of where the flaw began, but to, to your point, I agree with you that that NA, the numbers would have even been higher.
Right, so you take, basically, NA doesn't, NA doesn't count as a positive or a negative.
Correct.
So you take those numbers out. Neutral doesn't count as a positive, doesn't count as a negative. So you're not comparing it to five hundred and fourteen, you're comparing it actually individually to the number of actual respondents to the question. So there will be, there will be different numbers, it'll be higher, there's no question. That's not my point. My point is this, that was asked to go out. It's unusual that it goes out. Middle Borough's going through a fight right now as to whether or not surveys should be used. It showed exactly and people have said, well, why have you been quiet? I've been quiet because I don't need to speak because I know what's happening in this district and I presented that on the thirty-first. There is no question. I have sat here and been humiliated by town officials, a school committee member sitting across from me, as to whether or not I'm actually sick. We have done more work in this district in the last two week, in the last two years. I don't want this pushed out anymore. I'm gonna say that. I want to hear the evaluation so that when we go in on Wednesday and we talk to our staff, they know that the superintendent is supporting. Because this is dragged on way too long because a group of people needed a, a survey that ended up being the exact opposite of what they thought it was going to be. And, and this district deserves better in, in terms of getting information and I deserve to be able to say, yes, there is support for what we're doing. I'm happy that you did that, Jen, absolutely. If that's the only thing we do tonight, then that's okay, but I just needed to say, I think, I agree, the whole thing's been compromised from the beginning. The survey itself, the way it was created, anonymous statements, make no sense. So, I am frustrated as I'm watching superintendents across the Commonwealth go into year three. I can't start our year three in terms of where we need to go if I don't know where I need to grow. Now, we know it's budget, Jack has taken care of that. I find it incredibly ironic that Jack spoke here on the thirty-first and said the eight hundred thousand has been taken care of, just like we knew it was gonna be taken care of and it wasn't thrown under the table, there wasn't one point eight million dollars like somebody wanted to throw out just because it sounds good. Yes, it was a disaster last year and, and there were omissions and I own that, being hospitalized for how much I was and I'm still being questioned and I'm done with it. I am saying that publicly. My health is not to be part of any of this. It is not right and there's nobody that I know of in any form of business or any place else that would sit here and have their health questions and determine whether or not they are doing a good job with a diagnosis that will never go away. I'm tired of, I'm tired of proving it, I'm tired of being questioned and, and it's wrong.
It's disgusting.
It's wrong.
It's disgusting.
I think Mr. Strauss, through the chair, I have a question. I think also what it is, is you take it in a very negative way. I think you have mentioned many, many times before that you have made a lot of sacrifice during your treatment and you have used your own illness to, to, to let everyone know all the sacrifice that you has done and we appreciate that. So now you're upset because people asking question about the own illness that you always present here in this committee? I mean...
So, so I'm gonna respond to that. Number one, I don't ever use the term "I sacrificed." I don't ever say that. I don't complain, I don't say anything.
No, you are not.
But I have sat here and listened to people stand up about what's going on, about he can't do his job...
And that's wrong.
Thank you. And so I've had to finally come out. My health is my business.
Absolutely.
It is no one else's business.
Absolutely.
And it is disgusting that I've even had to have that conversation because town officials have questioned because he's not bald, because he didn't lose his hair, because he can't, can't, can't come to work, okay? I, I'm gonna tell you right now and you're gonna say, well, see, you're proven. It's sad that I have to do this now. On the fourteenth of August, I was at Dana Farber. I did...
You don't have to share.
I, I am gonna share because I'm fed up and this has nothing to do with you. This has nothing to do with you, Carolyn, so I apologize for my tone, that's not about you. On the fourteenth of August, I was at Dana Farber at seven AM, like I often am for immunotherapy and my other work. I took a meeting with our bus drivers, virtually, as I'm getting immunotherapy and I'm trying to make sure that I don't get sick. I spent an hour with John Burke doing what I need to do for this district. I chose that. But to be questioned that I can't do this job and then be questioned whether or not I'm actually ill is the most unfathomable thing I've ever heard and I wish the press was here tonight and I'm glad Lakeville is here. And I don't want anyone to ever have to deal with it. Anyone who's had to deal with an illness. It is not right. with an illness. It is not right. It is morally wrong. And so I don't post my excursion. I, the only social media I have is LinkedIn and Instagram for school. I don't post because I don't wanna be questioned, and the fact that I have been questioned is unbelievable to me. So the interesting thing is, Carolina, that I didn't go public with this, and I got raked over the coals for not telling the community. I told the school committee, I told the staff.
That's your right, too.
What?
That's your right. You don't wanna go public.
Correct, but I got pummeled for that.
Forced into it.
And so therefore, I had to get on the offensive and start saying, "This is what's happening with me." And then, time after time after time, I sit and listen, I owned what happened with the budget. I get it. I absolutely get it. But to connect the budget and what happened with a past, or with our, excuse me, our interim director that they were not doing, yes, I wasn't here as much as I should've been for oversight. I own that. I never made an excuse, and I never will. I wasn't raised that way. But the fact that I still sit here a year later, and the fact that I'm still in immunotherapy, and the fact that I will be on oral chemo the rest of my life, and there is a 10 to 15-year window, and I hope my son is not watching this right now, there is a 10 to 15-year window on average for people with CLL. That is their lifespan. There's also 40% of the people who get it at the stage that I got it that will have less than five years, and I deal with that every day. And I'm still here, and I don't want rewards, I don't want any of that. But this is what has happened that I've had to do. So it's not a sacrifice. I'm not, the last thing I've wanted to do, and I said it to the staff, and I actually gave you all exactly what I said to the staff. I don't wanna be telling anybody, but the staff had to know because I wasn't going to be around. I wasn't gonna be locking in rooms. I still, in fact, in May, I went to the, to the middle school play. I saw Erin Steele, who is the union president, and she said to me, "Are you okay to be here?" That's May. It was the first time I was in a large public. I don't go grocery shopping, I pee-pod. I don't go out publicly. I'm not wearing masks 'cause that creates a whole nother set of questions. And that creates problems. So I've done the best I could. Is it enough? No, because the budget was a problem. We've got that fixed with Jack. But to continue to go through this, I don't understand. I, I don't understand. The numbers in the survey show we have work to do. When I was here, the first thing that I said to everybody when I interviewed was I look at life through the line in Oscar Schindler and Schindler's List, when, as he was about to be taken, he said to his accountant, he played with his ring, and he said, "I could've saved four more." There are 75% of people who are happy? Yes. I'm concerned about the 25%. That's what I have to look at. We have 60% of our students who are doing well on MCATs. I don't know that because MCATs results aren't finalized, so that's not, I'm just throwing a number up. I'm concerned about those who are not meeting expectations, and I will always continue to do that. But this vitriol that I watch at our meetings every day that's not about kids has to stop. It has to. It's not good for kids, it's not good for staff, it's not good for this community.
It's not good for us. I'm tired of being badgered month after month after month along with you. I've had enough. It's disgusting. And to have to defend you on your health is absolutely disgusting. And for those who have done this, I have no words.
If the evaluation was no compromise, and what we need to do is do investigation, whether that she broke an ethical rule by sending that email, and whether the superintendent shouldn't not attach the compromised information, so why wouldn't move forward with the evaluation? I think he deserved that. And we all do, too, and the students and the district.
I completely agree, Caroline. If you're asking my opinion, you know, one of it.
So, the, the legal that we need to address, the issues that we need to address with legal, it has nothing to do with the evidence, with the performance, with the, so I just, I don't know why to hold back on the whole evaluation rather than address those two issues as they need to be addressed, because it's had more something to do with an ethical issue.
I agree.
Through the chair, Carolina, my response to that would be, right, if something did come back, right, God forbid the superintendent did something wrong, the evaluation would be complete at that point. Just to counter, playing devil's advocate, and I'll just say publicly, I'm really disappointed in the entire evaluation process. This district, for as long as I've been here, probably going through as a student all the way to my 15 years here on school committee, the evaluation's never been used as an "I gotcha" or a tool for "I gotcha." It does seem like it's been weaponized by some, which is, which is disheartening. The one thing that I do feel very confident in is that Mr. Strauss has, has obviously fought an unbelievable battle. Along the way, he's taken his bumps and his bruises, he's accepted accountability on areas where we, he's needed to take accountability. It's just disappointing that this committee continues to let a small vocal minority control the narrative and control the situation. So, Caroline, I hear you, I actually agree with you. I wanted to come in here tonight and get the evaluation done and move forward. There is a motion to table out there. Can always vote it down, but the motion's there right now.
And I believe this, this is the discussion portion of that motion.
Yep.
Steve?
Well, aside from owing the superintendent an apology, I sort of agree with you, given the timeline with the start of the school year coming. I do think it makes sense that we, not only do your evaluation give you feedback so you can grow, and that's professional growth, but then set goals for the new year on an appropriate timeline that's consistent with what DZ recommends. So it does make sense to give you feedback, and then the other stuff can go on a separate track. But, you know, what that looks like, we, you know, I think, John, you really need to grab hold of that and how we address those two issues. But I'm open to providing feedback and setting up the evaluation tonight.
And it would be nice for, and fair for him to go back to the school and say, "This is the areas that we need to be proud of, where we did great. This is the area that we need to grow on it and, and get going." So I think we need to move forward and, and address, I'm not saying not, we need to address the two issues that happened, but to, to use that to shut down the whole process, it's just, it's ridiculous.
It's not helping anybody.
Yeah.
Oh, in my opinion, Alan is, Alan is saying, "I know there's work to be done. Please give me the evaluation so I can see what needs to be approved so we can move on." I mean, I respect that.
Well, yeah, I gotta back up for just a second. Crystal, who did you talk to with Desi?
I don't know. I called the PRS line, and she got back to me. I don't remember what her name is.
Was it she?
Yeah, it was a she. She got back to me.
Mystery woman?
I don't wanna say a name that I'm not really sure of, but I spoke to John at the superintendent's association. We might have, I might have his name written down at home, but like I said...
I'd like to, I'd like to know the name if you've got it written down.
If I have it written down, I will send it to you.
Thank you.
Like I said, I did this, I have, I spent several, oh, sorry, I spent several hours going through and trying to figure this out. I had no guidance on this. I called Desi for guidance. I called Desi, I asked, "How should I do this? What is this?" And I talked to someone and they told me. They, they suggested when I told them the evidence was there to contact the superintendent's association. I did that. Then I said, I called the attorney general's office, and I spoke to them about the information.
So you never contacted anybody on the school committee, did you?
No, I did not. Because if I was wrong, I didn't wanna get anybody all upset and say, "Hey, I'm wrong and I made this big stink," but, you know.
But you did, exactly.
We call a participation on the agenda here.
Please, everyone.
It is, and...
We're not, we're not. So through the chair, point of order, we're not gonna go back and forth.
We understand your passion. We understand it.
Can we get back to the motion on the table?
So let's, let's get the evaluation.
The motion on the, there's, is a motion to table the evaluation tonight on the table. It is seconded, so I believe it does have to be a roll call. Vote, Reneg.
Yes.
No.
Will Sankovitz?
Yes.
Jen Blums?
Yes.
Bob Clark?
Yes.
Steve Sylvia?
Yes.
Courtney Brightman?
Yes.
Kristal Ling?
Yes.
Carolina Hernandez?
Yes.
So we're voting yes to table it?
Okay, motion passes to, to table the remainder of Alan's evaluation.
When is the next school committee meeting? I just found my calendar open.
The next, the next schedule, the next meeting we have on the calendar is the 25th of September, I believe.
So I'm gonna look at my phone just to look at the calendar. We might have to, as a committee, get together and find a date prior to that. September 18th is the next one? Oh, the 25th. Okay. So, John, it looks like we have to figure out, we'll probably have to talk to legal and find out when they'd be able to, I don't think it's gonna take them a ton of time to figure this out. When would they be available to come and present to the committee involving their findings? And if you could handle those conversations, that would be great.
Can I, as a member of the board, can I ask a question to the entire committee? Is the committee, would the committee be satisfied with the opinion of our district's legal department?
Why we pay them?
Understood.
Why we pay them?
Understood. I'm just putting it out there.
Answer the legal questions that we just presented?
Yes.
Yes, I would be satisfied with them.
Yes.
So what is, going back to the evaluation, you're now telling me that we're not gonna do anything until the 25th. Survey's gone out, everybody's seen what the survey results were. We're not gonna do any kind of voting until the 25th, or discussion until the 25th, and then, then it goes to subcommittee, and then the subcommittee writes it up, the final evaluation, which becomes the summative, which then gets voted on in October. Okay?
Through, through the chair, what I was saying, Superintendent Strauss was to get a meeting on the calendar prior to, right? I, my hope, and I think hopefully it's the committee's hope, that we can get everything buttoned up by that September 25th meeting. I know it's not ideal. It's where we're at. I think in the meantime, and you can start kind of crafting your goals, typically goals for your evaluation, do around October 1st, you know what those are going to be. We'll make sure that the evaluation process moving forward isn't delayed by this. And I think as reflective as you've been, you already know the feedback that's going to come your way.
Yeah, I have no problems with that, absolutely.
Okay. My hope would be that we would have a meeting prior to the 25th, hear from legal, get the evaluation done, have that be the only two things on the agenda. Move forward to the 25th.
And through the chair, I'm requesting that legal is to be here for the next one. I don't think it's gonna do any justice for any of us to sit here and read what legal has to say. I want legal to read what legal has to say.
Okay.
No, I just said that I will be calling the attorney general's office tomorrow.
Make sure you get names of who you speak with.
I am, that's what I'm calling for. Attorney general's office and Desi and superintendent's association tomorrow.
To get all of the names and written down and whatever you need.
Yeah, I, well, I could give you a tip, too. I think education is built on evaluations and the ed eval process, so you could also ask for a consult with the main office on how to attach the rubric and do the process.
Well, they told me how to do it. That was the whole thing, and they said that everything was...
But it looked like you called a lot of other people.
Oh, no, they referred me to the superintendent's association to ask.
But what I'm saying is you could use our own district as a resource.
I could, but I'm just gonna call them back and get whoever I talked to and they're sending you in.
Sure, it's a suggestion.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Is there any other business that may come before the meeting?
I did wanna say we've posted the float nurse position. New teacher orientation begins on Monday, and teachers all come back on Wednesday.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you, if I could ask a question to that, you feel building-wise we're in good shape?
Building-wise in terms of?
Having the buildings ready to open?
So...
Maintenance activities?
The philosophy is pretty simple. They're coming.
Yeah.
Kids are coming. And so kitchens are never 100% when they're being rebuilt and you start using them. Greg and his team have done a fantastic job. People need to remember that they are shorthanded, and there are only four people or five people or whatever we have in buildings, and is it perfect? No, but I'd love somebody to come in and spend a day doing what Greg and his team do, and then they will hopefully understand the reality. I've never, I've been in this business a long, long time. I've never had a student on the first day of school say, "There's dirt in the corner. I don't wanna be here." So if we as adults say there's dirt in the corner, then kids are gonna say, "Oh, there's dirt in the corner." But if we come in with joy and kindness, like I'm gonna continue to talk about in this district, then that's how kids are gonna feel, and that's what we need to do.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, hearing nothing else?
Just one more thing. How did we come to the decision to not have executive session?
I made the decision that we were not prepared to have it, to speak to the reason captured on the agenda.
You made that decision.
I made that decision.
Okay. I think just for the future, that should probably be a discussion.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. I'm entertaining a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
The second, all in favor?
No, none of us.